Chair Williams, you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I'm here.
You can start the call to order now. Now we're recording.
Okay, this is Chair Pat Williams of the Board of Elections Supervisors, Bladensburg, Maryland. Today, Wednesday, December the sixth, twenty twenty-three. Like to do a short roll call, like if I may, for those that are at present. Let's start with Ms. Lundey.
Present.
Michelle Bailey Headbath.
I'm present.
And I believe Monsey is available. I think she's.
Yeah, she's here, uh-huh, and.
And I'm not sure if anybody else is present. I don't see anyone else.
Ray Jeffries, Ray Jeffries is also on line of staff. There are three staff members here.
Great.
And.
Okay, great. Ray Jeffries, uh-huh. And is Ms. O'Durna here?
I don't see that she's.
She has not joined, neither has Ms. Saunders, it seems.
And Chair, just to let you know, Ms. Saunders did call to say that she was, she had a work commitment that conflicted with his time and that she may be on later, so that that she wanted me to make sure that was noted.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have to take care of the roll call for this meeting and we can move on to the approval of the minutes for November first, twenty twenty-three.
I apologize that you just got them, so if you want to hold off on approving those, you may to the next meeting, but we just wanted to provide you with some of the notes that you had them.
Excuse me, Chair Williams?
Yes?
I have a question. Did also Ms. Headback, you just sent it out a few minutes ago, the minutes?
I believe that they were sent by, um, Monty. Have you had a chance to send those out yet? Or were you waiting on my email for, for the memo?
Uh, I thought you were gonna send the memo in the.
I was, I was trying to send it to everyone, but then my, my, something happened with my computer, so can you email that to everyone now, so at least that they can have it and, uh, along with the, because I guess the agenda did not go out as well, so.
Okay.
Um, yeah, you can mail, email that now.
Joining now?
Okay. So I'm sorry, I thought they were sent, they were being sent out. I just, I'd been, I had a councilwoman member over in the office. I'm sorry, just had to. Didn't get to do the thing. Or, um. So, um, if you, if Chair with your.
Um, then we can.
Move to three? I, um, what I wanted to share with you is, and I'm gonna stop sharing the screen so that I guess it's a little bit less distracting. So, the, the board asked for staff to, um, make contact with a couple of different entities in regards to internal procedures, external, um, how they conducted their elections, and then some of the information in regards to, um, did they use, um, how did they receive, um, I wanna say mail-in, but we say, um, you know, having lock boxes and things like that. We were able to get in touch with, we put, um, we put something on MML about general information on election procedures and information and best practices within the state of Maryland. We're still working with MML to get that to you, but, um, we were able to talk to College Park, uh, because at first when we contacted College Park, they were like, we don't have these procedures written down. And then after I talked to her, she realized, she said, oh yeah, I do have that written down, I have that written down. So we ended up talking for about an hour, and I think what I wanted to share with you is that conversation. Um, I have put this in writing and I will email it to the board. However, I just thought it would be good to give the, the board a kind of an overview of what College Park does a little bit differently than what Bladensburg kind of does, and I think some things that we can learn from them and things that they can, that they will be providing us shortly. She did not have the internal procedures ready by the time of this meeting, but she would have them to me early next week, which I will forward it to you. But, um, what I learned is, is that, um, a couple of things, that in College Park, what they do is a little different in regards to having the Board of Elections Supervisors meet on a monthly basis throughout the year. Um, they actually are much more engaged with their, um, board and they actually meet to discuss these things on a monthly basis. And as part of that, in their process of the election, they start a lot earlier than we do. And the issues that we sort of ran into with candidates not understanding that they were candidates or the fact that their information was complete, um, we discussed the, the fact that when candidates in College Park have a, have pro, um, fulfilled the majority, have filled, fulfilled all of the information they need to, um, for candidacy, they've turned in all their paperwork, they've got the disclosures in, everything looks good. The clerk and the board of, the board chair meet, um, to determine if that, they both kind of meet to make sure that that's okay, what they, what we have, what they have is okay, and then that information is then, um, the candidate is informed that we have all the information that we need. Uh, they have all the information they need, and then they're able to start to campaign. What the clerk and I were discussing was the fact that this issue, I think, uh, just to kind of deal with one of these first issues that was raised by candidates, is that can they campaign without, or can they start their process without the, um, you know, before the board meets? There's nothing in their code, and there doesn't seem anything to be in our code. I'm gonna be working with our town attorney on that, that says that if their information is, is sufficient, the chair has reviewed it, the board, um, the, um, the clerk has reviewed it, that they are, they're, they're notified that that information is on file and is complete. And that when the Board of Elections Supervisors meets to, um, to verify the slate, that, that their name is being submitted for that, thus that if, as long as they're not, um, violating the town's, ordinance of putting, um, signage in the right of way, that doesn't stop them from campaigning necessarily. So that's how it works in College Park. I wanted to kind of, one, give that information to the board. It seems like a reasonable process, and it actually seems a lo, a little bit more, um, the way that it's not the fact that the town clerk would hold all the information and then wait until the last day to present it all to the board, um, of election supervisors, that information would be given to the Board of Elections Supervisors, they would be aware of it. And either it would be given to the chair or given to the board throughout the, um, candidate process. That was one issue that we talked about, and I thought that was very important. The other thing that she also talked about is how she prepares for the election several months out and brings in the board to review processes, like how they set up their different tables, how they accept ballots and things like that at meetings. I think that in what she said that she was going to provide to us, which I will provide to you at your January meeting, are these procedures that they have come up with? For, you know, provisional ballots, who, how do you, how do you sign people in? They have procedures for each one of those things, which I believe that's what the board was looking for. I will share that once I get it. We'll make sure that gets out to everyone, um, and that you guys can look at it before our next meeting, so that you can say, hey, this does work, or we'd like to do something different, or we handle this differently, but we could put together our own internal procedures for each one of those things. So that was one, that was another thing that I found out. Um, the other thing that we talked, where we sort of have differing, um, uh, processes is this issue of mail-in, um, acceptance of ballots. Since we have a strict deadline that the day of the election is our timeline, um, some of the things that she said are, you know, as far as receiving late ballots that we don't have to worry about, but having the lock boxes, which they have implemented, she actually gave us the vendor, and we will share that with you um, at a future meeting with some different options for the town. Uh, they put them, they put theirs at four locations throughout the town. Um, I would suggest that probably because we're a little smaller and we don't have a lot of town-owned locations that we might use too, maybe, um, the town hall and the fire department having those boxes, because I know that sometimes people don't feel comfortable, like feeling that they're going to the town hall always and, and dropping it in, maybe it's from a more anonymity for the ballot voting process, but they're, um, these, these, um, boxes are bolted to the ground, they're steel boxes, and they are clearly identified as ballot location or ballot drop boxes. And they're not really big, they actually, most of them can hold, the ones at College Park is using, holds about five hundred ballots, and what happens is that the board would come up with a procedure, which is what they also have, is the collection of those ballots on a regular basis by an election worker or by a member of the board. So that, part of that process, once we would have lock boxes, is that there would be a board procedure and an internal procedure on how they're collected and how often they're collected. And there'd also be a procedure that on, on election day, what time that you would collect any ballots that were in those boxes. So that's another item that we discussed, which I thought was, would be really helpful for the board, and we will, what staff will do is, one, share the College Park, um, some of their information and whatever information we get, plus the information on the actual ballot. We'll have some, when she, we, I just met with her Monday, so I couldn't pull down every single i, item. So what we'll do is we'll put together, um, that information for you. I want to stop and see if there's any questions about what I've talked about so far.
I have.
Oh, I, I have a comment and suggestion. Thank you so much for that and look forward to getting those, um, notes. So another location I would like to add is the, is our community center.
Okay.
I would like to have that definitely be one of our, uh, locations for our drop boxes, I mean, for the lock boxes.
Okay.
Um. And I have another note.
Yeah, the only issue, um, Ms. Lundey, that I'm trying to make sure that with them is that I don't know if they've done it in other municipalities before, because it's not, we don't own it and control it, but I, but we will talk with Maryland Park and Planning and ask them if we can, because of the fact that it has to be drilled into the ground, and I just want to make sure that they're okay with us using, you know what I'm saying, like having something that can be removed, but is somewhat permanent. Does that make sense? Every, every couple of years?
Yeah, because Bladen, the community center is one of our polling places anyway.
Yeah.
That's a good thing, too. They're one of our polling places, so um, I don't see it be a problem, and I don't know if you know right offhand if there, that was a fly. If there are any, um, other municipalities that use their community center as a, um, drop, a locked drop box location during.
Yeah, I can find that out from Chevrolet or some, if the, I'm thinking that would be the, does Chevrolet have their own community center, or is it just, I'm, I'm still new to the area?
Not sure.
Yeah, because I know that Col, that Colmar Manor and Edmiston each have their own, um, community centers, yeah, so they all have their own MMPPCC facilities, or they have their own facilities, so that's why. But yeah, we can, we can definitely do that, Councilwoman, I, I mean, I'm, Ms. Lundey, I can definitely do that.
Yeah, that would be nice to check into that. And let me go off on you, I can't think of anything else right now. I gotta leave my own handwriting.
All right, you can always come back to that one. So, so the next part about that we also discussed is about the mail-in ballot itself. Because we, I asked some specific questions in regards to our mail-in ballot, like our affidavit and this having two envelopes. And I asked, did they use anybody in particular? And then she referred us to a company which we will, uh, we still have to vet, but it's a company out of New York that does ballots for a lot of municipalities throughout the nation, and she actually talked about how their ballot's a little different. How the, and I remembered when I would vote, um, absentee in other states, that I had this option, was that um, I would sign, there's a part on the back of the envelope that you would sign, that's your affidavit, that's actually part of the envelope itself, that it's not a separate form. That way, when the voter puts the ballot in the envelope, they must sign the ballot, and it's very visible to the board that if it's not signed, it's not a valid ballot, if that makes sense. And it's very easy for you to know which ones have affidavits, which ones don't, because you would have the outside of the, um, information signed, if that makes sense. So, what I'd like to do is to get some samples of what that looks like for the board. Send that to you for you to review and look at, and then even if it's using or not using a, this company or using other companies, it would be something that we would look at implementing for the ballot itself. And the other part that would be a policy recommendation from this board is postage itself. Um, College Park has as a policy that they provide postage to their residents, and they use, they do free postage. I think that's something of the board, that the board may want to look at. What they do is they use a, um, a metered mail system. So it's not that they're pre-stamping all these, so it's a metered mail, they send it back and they get their, and so it's, and I, I would suggest if we did do it, I think from the standpoint of cost, we do it through a metered system with a, with a company that would do all that, because it would then mean that we're not just mailing out, you know, lots of, um, things, and some of the, I think we had about, I'm, I'll have to get what our, our number of ballots requested, and then the number of ballots returned, so that you can know if we did po, I mean, if we did provide postage, if that was a, you know, how much that would have cost us in the last election, because I think we, we do have a number on the number of ballots that we sent out, and I know we have a, a good number of numbers of ballots that we, that were returned. So, that's something that staff will come back and bring to you, um, but I think the whole issue of maybe changing the format of our ballot and having a more professionally put-together ballot, which is something that I think we've been trying to work for an all long time, um, but there are companies that do it, and talking to the College Park person was very helpful, because the ballot itself is very, it was, it's very easy, and we could integrate it with our, our current scanning system.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no questions. I just wanted, yeah, to leave that open.
Okay, so that was good. So I wanted to know, um, as we're going into our, um, uh, our next meetings or what have you, are we gonna have a meeting where we're going to look at our actual procedures? We can break that up in phases?
Exactly.
Because as a result of our town hall meetings and everything like that, I think there are some issues with our, with our procedures, so I would like to have a meeting where we would actually look at our process. And, you know, line by line, or however you wanna work, have a working meeting or what have you.
I think you're right. I think the thing about is, what I'd like to do is send you what, the, some of the stuff that, um, we got from College Park. And then also take that side by side of what was done, I, because we, ours are not written out. Um, I'm, so, um, I, I guess I'll just have to put a thing saying, um, that, that, um, ours are not written out. I don't think the way that theirs are, but what we could do is kind of say, take what we've done and say what, what they have written out, and then, you know, marry it to what we're looking for. That's my suggestion is to say, and then to develop written policies for all these things, internal policies, um, on how you do it. Um, and especially, let's say, you know, what our ballot, I think for, from, from the dis, the decision is like, the policy decision to say, we'd like to see a ballot that looks like this, and then we could bring it to the board, and the board would do it. So every meeting you would have over the next, next, you know, year, we would have these things come up.
Okay, may I say something here?
Yes.
Um, I like the suggestion and what you have put together, uh, and I like what Ms. Lundey has suggested as well, and I think out of all of that, putting it all together, I think Bladensburg needs a handbook of its own for procedures or of procedures for its Board of Elections Supervisors, um.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think that when I was talking to College Park, they don't, they don't call it a formal handbook.
I was talking with someone else.
Yeah.
About a week or so ago, and they were, and I just very given issues that we've had. I'm sorry, that, that, um, I heard someone talking behind me. I didn't know. If you were making a suggestion, was that you, Ms. Lundey? No?
No.
Okay, I couldn't tell who it was, because it was.
Uh, it's me, um, no, I was gonna say that the, the thing that we were, um, that when I was talking to other municipalities, I think we'd be one of the first to have a board preset of procedures. I think what everybody else has is more of like informal items that they kind of have documented, um, which is good. Um, the one thing that, that when I spoke with the College Park, and that's the final item I was gonna mention, is that candidate guide. They really focus on what goes out to candidates and what goes out to the public in regards to rules, more so than the boards themselves. Um, because there's so many things in regards to, um, your code and state law that sort of changes, that so by the time you put together all these things, the law may change on some of these things, and I think, you know, Ms. Lundey probably knows from the standpoint of working on the county level, that legislatures change some of these things so much um, that some of your working procedures have to be, um, updated every time there are things that change from the, you know, from the state legislature or the federal, just, just guidelines change a little bit. So that's why she has, um, but it's not to say that we shouldn't write these things down. I think we need to write them down. It's just saying that she said it was tougher, and she's been doing, she's been city clerk there for a while, to write down a comprehensive book, because things have changed a lot in the last few years. So that's what, that was just her comment on that.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm. So I think, I mean, it, I think it's a good project. It might be an ambitious project, I guess I would say, is that, but I think we need to codify a lot of things that we, like that, that happened from the last election to try to make sure that we do it. And I think the one thing is that what I learned, um, from talking with her is that from the standpoint of the clerk's position, that position needs to be proactive a lot earlier than we were, um, in the process. And start the process with the board in probably March, April. Um, and she was saying that she meets with the board every two weeks um, within the first, within the three, three or four months of the election, so that it's not just like, yeah, by the way, here's the slate of candidates, oh yeah, here's the ballot. You know, like, those are not, that, that there's, it's a really working relationship between this committee and the clerk, and that they meet much more frequently, and they discuss issues, and she meets with them all the way through, even between the elections, kind of like what we're, what we're beginning now to do, is that she would suggest that we continue with these monthly meetings. And so what we will do as staff is that we'll put together a list of topics for each meeting, you know, one or two topics that will kind of keep us focused to say, okay, this month we're gonna talk about, we'll have information on internal procedures of these three things. And here's an update on mailbox, uh, on, on the bo, on the ballot box, and then here's, you know, here's this one, and here's an update on, so you'd have two items per meeting where you basically kind of dive in. So in the memo I put together, I put together about seven or eight topics. And for that I had to discuss with her, and I would suggest that what we can do is then put together like a year, you know, taking off, let's say this year in July, maybe in August, because I'm sure it's difficult to meet during those months, especially since we don't have an election coming up. But we can get some consensus from you all, but like that we would meet and say, so January, February, March, April, May, that these are where we start with. And then you can then, you can tweak them, but this is just a starting point to say, you know, internal procedures the, of the, of the ballot, you know, ballot acceptance and things like that. Those could be January, February, we'd look at this, March, you'd look at this. So those are, that's what we would suggest to kind of bring to this group. How do you feel about that?
Um, um.
Excellent idea.
May I go first, Chair? Or did you wanna go? Can you, did you?
I don't know.
Oh, I'll go.
Okay.
So, I like your suggestion, um, town administrator, so I wanna, uh, make sure as a part of your topics that we, you're not only going over line by line what our procedures are, but clearly defined and outline the roles and responsibilities of the town versus the Board of Supervisory Elections.
Yeah, I think that's helpful, because I think what the clerk, you know, like, as the clerk gets, as we get a new town clerk, what the clerk's role is and what's the role of the board, and I also believe, I mean, like, what, when I was talking to the clerk in College Park, she works very closely with this board. And I think that's where we would like to see the clerk do, um, but the clerk also has responsibilities. They can't shift them all onto you, if that makes sense as well, like they have the responsibilities of, you know, obtaining this information, getting it together, having stuff ready, and then, you know, actually executing several things, like with the, you know, and so those, those things will outline for you, um, from what the law makes the clerk do, and then the other part about is then you can then know where the board, because the board does, you know, approve and confirm the, you know, the, the, the people on the ballot. The bur, the, the board chair in, um, College Park is the one who meets with the clerk to do some items, and that's not necessarily, but you guys could choose to say if that, because the board is small, that it's the chair or you, but the, it's the chair or the entire board. But in some ways, is it, you know, what's feasible, but the chair there reviews initially all application, all candidate applications to make sure they're complete before they go to the board. And can raise questions and things like that. I think it's a good check to have the chair to do that, because I think in some ways the chair has looked at it, you have staff looking at the chair, looking at it, and then it goes to the board for final approval, and you have that kind of information, and it's not done all at the last day that things are due, they're done throughout the process, so that's, that's better.
So, uh, and I, I also think that because we are a small board that, um, and I've been looking at some other towns too, that because we are a small board, I think we all should be involved in that process, and that's when we could do, um, an in-person meeting to do that. So we don't have to be holding up stuff on the screen or what have you, so I, my recommendation would be that we would all be involved in that process. Also, that would help with training and learning as well. Um, and I also want to speak to the training part, too. In one of our topics, we could also bring in my colleagues from the Prisons of this County Board of Elections.
That sounds good.
For one about trainings, um, but my recommendation would be for the review as, and it's, it's funny, because our policy is written that that's a Board of Supervisory Responsibility, that we would do that collectively. And we are a small board, and it's a, it's a good training opportunity as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's fine. I just, I want to make sure that you guys are okay with what, like, with, you know, like, comparing what we found, so I, she, the, in, you know, just from, I'm just going through my, the stuff from my thing, they do meet in person. Um, in the, in the last stages, they do online meetings and they meet in person, but they, during the last stages, I, I do agree that we probably, probably will meet more in person, but this position, the clerk's position will need to make sure that they set up these meetings in advance with everyone to make sure these times work, and if it's evening times versus, um, you know, versus daytimes, we will have, we'll get that on the calendars.
So, and, and that's good, too. So one of the good qualifications for our new town clerk would be, they would have some great experience as it relates to elections.
Hopefully. We're looking for somebody who has, who has a CMC, I mean, that's preferred as a CMC, someone who's a certified municipal clerk. So that is, that is something that we'd like to see. Chair Williams, um, is there, I believe that's pretty much everything in my report. I'm trying to make sure that I hit it up. Let me just make, let me read everything to make sure I'm not um, not, not missing anything, which I, I'm sorry, I didn't, didn't get in the middle.
Think I'm looked in connection.
Oh, can you hear me now? Uh, I can pull myself off the screen.
Yeah.
Okay, so the only, only other information that I think that I did not mention is, no, election prepare, um, timelines. I think the one thing is that, I mean, I just want to stress is that the issue of timelines is really important. And as part of whatever we do that we put together, you know, sort of a calendar, um, for moving forward. I think we have a decent calendar of when certain things are due statutorily, but then what's the backend preparing for that? Um, and how much time does that, should that reasonably take, and then making sure that the staff executes at those time, timeframes beforehand? Which is what we would like. That's where, that's where I think the, the work on, if you ask from our end as the town, where we could do better, is making sure that that is, that is, that's codified to say, you know, town clerk internally will start working on the next year's election by March. You know, uh, and probably that's a little even late, but let's just say by, at the latest, they will start by March fifteenth, you know, getting together timelines, putting out information, having candidate information ready, things like that, and reviewing that information for fi, for board review and finalization by May first, you know, because that's something that takes time every year to put together everything. If they at least start by March, then they can get that together. Uh, Monty put that we sent out a hundred and five absentee ballots and fifty-three of them were counted. So, I mean, we're part of those things. So about fifty percent, so that's a fifty percent response rate. Um, so, you know, I think the metered mail might help. It might be, we'll figure out how much it costs, so that you can, so that the, that we can see whether or not we can, if it's just printing, it's a, just a printing company printing envelopes and, you know, putting, uh, it could cost us more to just print with a larger company. So we'll be able to evaluate that and give that to the board. So we'll be able to evaluate that and give that to the board.
Thank you.
So that's my report and I feel like it's pretty straightforward, but I did put this in writing and I will put that in, in email to everybody. I just was having difficulties with the, uh, with the file. I guess it was saved in the wrong place. So I was trying to get that out to you and, but I will put that in in mail, in the e, in email to everyone at the ending, at this meeting.
And I believe you said you're gonna send something out to everyone to see when our next, um, meeting will be for January?
Yeah, so is there any times that I should avoid? Because, uh, I know that, that we're just finishing up the holiday season now, or there, I know that we have, uh, the Martin Luther King Holiday uh, weekend, but that's about it in January. Is there any other? Um, are the afternoons, if we did an afternoon like this, is that the best time, the three thirty time period?
Three thirty is good for me.
Yeah, me too.
This is Ms. Williams.
Ms. Lundie, I'm, I'm in agreement with.
And January is open as well.
Okay, so what I'll do is I will have staff now to kind of look at my calendar and stick something for, um, probably giving us this Wednesday, probably either the fourteenth, oh, yeah, wrong week, I'm like December, January. Yeah, either the eleventh, I mean, sorry, the tenth or the seventeenth of January, um, a Wednesday afternoon, similar timing.
All right, I guess we're all on.
So, yeah, so I will make sure that gets out, um, this week and have that sent to you. Um, with those two, with a couple of dates and then get everyone, um, together. Um, and that's it. And as soon as we get information from um, College Park, what we'll do is we will, I'll send, we'll send it out in advance so they can, so that can be, so that the board can have time to look at it and that way you're looking at it the same time we are.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Happy holidays, ladies. Thank you for coming.
Happy holiday.
You. Yep. Have a safe holiday.
You too. All right, God bless. Take care.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye, everyone.
I'll take care of it.